Thank you. I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz. Here. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next recommended action is that the Board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened, or a reasonable potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz. Aye. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz. Aye. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin our recognition, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the tragic shooting that occurred in Highland Park on July 4th, taking the lives of seven individuals and seriously wounding many more. It is truly horrifying that we have had to address mass shootings twice at our school board meetings within just three months. The fact that this one occurred so close to home has made it even more personally emotional for so many of us. Our thoughts are with those affected. I now ask for a moment of silence to honor the lives lost. Thank you. I would now like to turn it over to Dr. Small for our state award winners, please.
Thank you. Director of Athletics and Extracurriculars Eric Winkowski, if you would come forward and introduce us to some wonderful coaches and student athletes that we are here to honor tonight.
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to honor some athletes from two of our schools tonight. Students, as your sponsor introduces you, please walk forward, stand here next to the podium and be recognized. Additionally, I'm going to ask any family members of students that are present tonight to stand and be recognized by, at the same time as their coach is recognizing them. Helping honor these students tonight are Fremd Principal Mark Lang and Athletic Director Hameed Mary Oskwee and Hoffman Estates Athletic Director Steve Lackney. So we'll get started with Fremd. Fremd Head Girls Tennis Coach John Kent and the Head Girls Track Coach Joe Morrison weren't able to attend tonight, but we have the new Fremd Athletic Director Hameed Mary Oskwee here tonight to introduce his tennis and track athletes. And I would also like to add that Hameed is a proud District 211 graduate. Hameed?
First off, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board for putting us some time aside to recognize the achievements of our athletes. First up is our four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team, our girls track and field. Ladies, their performance is this year, Senior Kira White, Senior Maria Esquivel, sophomore Tammy Foreman, and sophomore Katie Keane. Come on forward. There. Parents, grandparents, you can please stand at this time. These talented ladies are sectional champions in the four-by-two-hundred-meter with a time of one minute forty-five seconds, which allowed them to qualify for the state meet last month. They came into the state meet as the underdog, ranked seventeenth in the state after phenomenal preliminary performance on the first day of competition in less than ideal conditions. They were able to qualify for the state final race. Their final performance led them to be all-state athletes and ranked ninth in the state. This is a testament to not only their talent, but their composure and commitment to each other as teammates. I would also like to take a moment to recognize Kira White for her individual performances this season. She finished seventh in the long jump and ninth in the triple jump in the state. Her many accomplishments this season include being the sectional champion in the long jump, obtaining the conference meet record in the long jump, and breaking two school records in the triple jump with a jump of thirty-six-nine and a long jump with a jump of nineteen feet. Kira will be continuing her athletic career as a Division One athlete at the University As a member of our boys tennis team, Andrew recently completed a highly successful sophomore season at Frem by placing third place in singles at the IHSA State Tournament. This is Frem's first-ever boys' single state medal. He finished the season with an impressive twenty-five-two record and route to winning both the MSL Conference and sectional singles championships. Additionally, his eleven team points earned at the state tournament were instrumental in leading the team to a fourth-place team finish, which is the highest in school and District 211 history. Andrew is considered to be one of the top players in the nation, and we look forward to two more years of having him in the program. Thank you very much.
All right. We move on to Hoffman Estates. Hoffman Estates Head Girls Track Coach Jenny Huffman is unable to be here tonight. In her place, we have Hoffman Estates Athletic Director Steve Lackney. Steve?
Good evening, Dr. Small, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for your continued support of athletics and activities in our district. It's much appreciated. And thank you for the opportunity to stand before you tonight to present to you one of our student athletes, Ashley Oliver. Ashley, of course, is now an alum. She's accompanied tonight by her parents Angela and Christopher. Please stand. And Sister Nina. Ashley is an incredibly intelligent and gifted student athlete. As an athlete, she played twelve seasons for the Hawks, excelling in golf, basketball, and track and field. Her accolades include being named MSL All-Conference and Daily Herald All-Area in Basketball, and not to mention, she managed to score over one thousand career points in basketball. And that's just for starters. In track and field, Ashley is absolutely unstoppable. She has collected many track and field awards at invites, at MSL Conference meets, and at the IHSA State Finals. This year alone, Ashley was second place in the MSL in the one-hundred-meter dash, MSL Conference Champion in the two-hundred and the four-hundred-meter dash, and she qualified for the IHSA State Final in the one-hundred-meter dash, the two-hundred-meter dash, and the four-hundred-meter dash. She was an IHSA State Medalist, taking sixth place in the four-hundred-meter dash this past spring. Her academic achievement is impeccable as well, carrying a perfect unweighted four-point-oh GPA. I personally have presented Ashley with the top student athlete GPA award every season for her junior and senior year, so I'm very proud to present her with that. Ashley has juggled her love for sports and academics successfully. She's the epitome of what a Hawk student athlete is all about. She's developed the values of grit and perseverance, which has helped her carry through her high school career. Ashley will attend the University of Illinois this fall on scholarship. She will study bioengineering, and she will compete for the University of Illinois in track and field. All this, and I did not mention, she is also our Female Athlete of the Year for this past school year. Congratulations, Ashley. Thank you for being a great Hawk, and good luck in your future endeavors. Congratulations.
With that, thank you to our students, our student athletes, for your dedication to your activity, to your academics, and thank you to the parents for all that you do for the students, not just for your own child, but for all of the kids that are in those different teams. All of the driving, all of the staying and cheering and supporting. That's so important for the kids, to be able to see that and to have that. So thank you, parents, for all that you do for the children, well, our young people. We're going to take some pictures at the moment, and so we'll pause for about five minutes, and then we'll begin our regular meeting. So we'll have our students come over here for some pictures. Our next on our agenda is public comments. The Board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the Board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. There will be five minutes allotted for public comments tonight. I have five people that are speaking. Our first speaker is Joyce Slavik, followed by Lisa Calasino.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavik. I'm a parent in the district, and first of all, I'd like to say I really appreciate the student recognition at the beginning. It's really just awesome and fun to see those. I want to express support for inclusive literature and education in our schools. This includes books that cover subjects such as LGBTQI, racism, inclusion, mental health, and other under-addressed and minority-focused issues. It's important that our youth from all walks of life feel supported, included, and are able to see their true selves reflected in all areas of our schools, including books in our libraries and curriculum topics. I've heard comments at previous meetings and also in other areas as well against some books and curriculum topics that cover difficult issues such as gender identity, sexuality, and teenage identity struggles. Parents who do not want their children to read such literature can opt their children out of access, but their choice should not impact everyone else's children's freedom to read inclusive literature if they so choose. Many children who struggle with their gender identity or sexuality are at a higher risk of suicide. Nearly half of LGBTQ youth seriously consider suicide, and something as simple as having access to material such as inclusive literature and comprehensive sexual education can help them to realize that they are not alone. I encourage the district to continue to offer a wide variety of books and instruction that reach out to the entire student body and are aligned with our district's inclusive vision for our kids. Having an inclusive school environment helps our students thrive and, for some, survive. I support SB eight-eighteen, the Keeping Youth Safe and Healthy Act, and would like to see it adopted in our district. SB eight-eighteen passed last year and expands comprehensive sexual health education for grades six through twelve, as well as in the younger kids' grades. Schools can use their own curriculum, and parents can opt out, but I hope that they don't opt their kids out because there's important information in these standards, including information on healthy relationships, preventing STDs and unintended pregnancy, consent, information on sexual orientation and gender identity. According to CDC data from 2019, thirty-eight percent of high school students surveyed had sexual intercourse. Nine percent had four or more sexual partners, and forty-six percent did not use a condom when they last had sex. Twelve percent did not use any method to prevent pregnancy. Seven percent had been physically forced to have sexual intercourse, and this includes boys and girls. Forty-seven percent of LGBTQ students considered suicide. Talking about safe sex and sexual identity is not going to change whether or not teenagers have sex, or if they're gay or lesbian, but it could very well save their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Calasino, followed by Karen Powers.
Good evening. I'm a parent of two Frem students. They are average students. They are social, participate in extracurricular activities, have part-time jobs, and stay out of trouble. Illinois passed a law that requires the use of the National Sex Education Standards, which is a misleading title written by an activist, non-governmental organization that is not accountable to any legislative oversight. This non-for-profit organization is called Advocates for Youth, and they claim that it's time for young people to lead, and they say that they are young, powerful, and taking over. I was unable to find financials on the website, and there was no information about how to attain them. However, they employ numerous numbers, numerous staff members with advanced degrees, PhDs and MDs on their team. The emphasis of Advocates for Youth is almost entirely on people of color, gender nonconforming, homosexual, bisexual, pansexual, transgender, genderqueer, and the list goes on. There is no mention of positive masculinity, positive male roles and behaviors, and even men, except when referring to an advocacy program for young men who want to have sex with other men. In fact, eighty-seven percent of the staff is female, and almost all the subjects in the website photos are women, yet they spell the word woman as W-O-M-X-N. We live in an area that is inhabited by mostly families. How does this organization possibly represent the families in this area, specifically fathers and sons? Advocates for Youth promotes rhetoric like being pro-defund the police and racist terms like the word whiteness. Also, they promote a pro-abortion campaign called Abortion Out Loud. I cannot speak for everyone in this district, but my guess is that most pro-choice individuals do not agree with the shout-your-abortion cause. On the website, I found one religious-based reference, and it described queer Muslims. The gender ideology push in the National Sex Education Standards begins in K-two, K-through-two. It does not reflect the values of most families in this area. Most of us just want our kids to be kids. We put our trust in our schools and teach our children reading, to teach our children reading, writing, and arithmetic, et cetera, and not so much emphasis on sexual behavior and gender ideology. The push in the media and in education with regard to LGBTQIA-plus ideology has caused an explosion in the numbers of children who identify as such. It is vastly a social contagion, just like Big Hair was in the 1980s. It also provides a safe haven from white guilt, transferring from the role of loathed oppressor to revered oppressed. Again, let our kids be kids. Reading through the National Sex Education Standards, quite a bit of it was disturbing. Anal sex, oral sex, masturbation, and sexual pleasure should not be discussed in a school setting. I would hardly feel comfortable with a doctor discussing these topics with my minor child, let alone a teacher. What doctor would approve of a minor engaging in anal sex? The Sex Ed Standards and Advocates for Youth website offers links to amaze.com, which provides information that normalizes and minimizes the risk of the use of puberty blockers and abortion medication. I could not find any information on how puberty blockers, cross-sex hormone therapy, and bottom surgery will cause sexual dysfunction in our young children and adults. The Advocates for Youth organization has been around for decades. There is no doubt that it has evolved since gender ideology did not exist until just recently. The organization would be expected to continue to radically update its content without any oversight in years to come. This is terrifying. I am asking you to please vote not to adopt this.
You have one minute remaining.
I know I cannot count on Kim Cavill, as she calls herself a sexpert and a sex-positive parent, but I hope the other six of you will give this sincere consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Powers, followed by Kathy Rizberg.
Good evening. My name is Karen Powers, and my daughter attends a school in District 211. On June fifteenth, I sent an email regarding the gun incident at Hoffman Estates High School to Dr. Small, and the Board of Education was copied on it. It is July twenty-first, and I have not received a response from Dr. Small. My daughter attends Hoffman High. On the day of the gun incident, May thirteenth, she texted to let me know that there was another fight at school, and they were in a soft lockdown. Unfortunately, these types of texts were all too common last year. I didn't think there was a cause for concern until I got an email from the principal regarding the incident to inform us that a gun was involved. Eleven days later, May twenty-fourth, there was a fatal school shooting in Texas. Two days later, there was this board meeting. In that meeting, Mr. Schumacher read a statement that basically referenced current policy regarding school safety, and that was it. There was no discussion on what the administration was going to do moving forward to prevent another student from bringing a gun to school. What happened at Hoffman Estates High School should not be casually brushed off with a soft-spoken statement of what's already in place. As a parent, am I to believe that this administration thinks this is now the norm, that there is no reason to take a long, hard look at how this can be prevented in the future? Furthermore, student number three-one-zero-zero-one-nine, as referenced at the meeting, was not expelled. Instead, this board voted six to one without public discussion to move the student to an alternative school within 211. What is the security like at the alternative school? Are there metal detectors? Is there only one entrance? Is there more than one SRO? Or is this simply a dumping ground for the student? As I asked in my email that Dr. Small ignored, what does it take to get expelled from a D-211 school? Apparently, bringing a gun does not qualify. This district is soft on discipline, and the students know this. Ms. Klimkowitz, at the May twenty-sixth meeting, you were visibly moved when speaking of the tragedy that took place at the Texas school. Yet, less than an hour later, you voted not to expel the student that brought a gun to my daughter's school. Make it make sense to me, please. I am grateful for Mr. Arthur, Hoffman's SRO, and the Hoffman Estates Police Department. I believe they acted in a quick and appropriate manner. Sadly, not all school administrators are acting in the same manner to protect our kids. A student at Frem pulled a knife on another student, and the school never went into lockdown. What was the disciplinary action for this student? Was he sent to the alternative school? This is just one example of how differently school administrators are reacting to the violence within our schools. Bringing a gun to school with intent to use it is not normal. Stop normalizing this behavior with lenient discipline. Student number three-one-zero-zero-one-nine is not a victim. He or she broke the rules at school and broke the law. Yet, here we are, shuffling the student off to another school. It's shameful.
Thank you. Kathy Rizberg, followed by Stacy Gale.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Rizberg, and is a District 211 taxpayer. I want to thank you for giving me and my fellow community members a chance to speak at these monthly meetings. Tonight, I stand here, as I did this past May, to thank you and the District Equity Team for taking the time to listen to the diverse voices in this district and to take steps to remove any barriers for learning so that all students have the freedom to learn. And as parents, grandparents, and community members, no matter our skin color, our age, our faith affiliation, or zip code, we most likely will agree that taking steps to remove these barriers is a sign that you, as a school board, believe that all students deserve to be respected and valued for who they are as individuals and as learners. Yet, we know that some folks, often encouraged by powerful politically-funded national groups, are showing up at school board meetings like this all across the country, often in an angry and threatening manner to foment culture wars over books, teaching of history, teaching anything about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Nevertheless, after two years of watching these culture wars, it's good to know that the majority of parents understand that the spreading of disinformation at school boards is happening entirely at our students' expense and not on our students' behalf. The majority of parents know it is happening as an effort to divide us as a community and divide us as a country so that some politicians can continue to build a political base and hold on to political power. And the majority of parents are beginning to realize that all the disinformation and confrontational behavior at school board meetings is happening to undermine the legitimacy of democratic governance, as was noted by writers Conne and Rogers in their October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one Los Angeles Times op-ed. So tonight, I invite other parents, as I stand here, and educators and community members to join with others like me, who are willing to publicly stand up and speak in support of our school boards and our public schools. Those of us who show up at these meetings in support of you, and those of us who use our voice to speak, are, according to Conne and Rogers, partisans for democracy, rejecting rhetoric, falsehoods, and threats being made against school board members. Again, my thanks to you for this chance to speak, and I invite others in attendance today and watching this online to become a partisan for democracy.
Thank you. Stacy Gale.
Hello, I'm Stacy Gale. I'm a D-211 resident. I'm here tonight to ask the administration and the board to partner with parents in the education of their children. Many of the parents here tonight have repeatedly expressed their concerns during public comments just to receive blank stares. These parents are not asking for special treatment for their child or making selfish requests. They are asking you to consider their concerns for the greater community. They are thoughtful in their comments and requests. Their experiences are not limited to the education system, so they see things a bit differently than the administration. They live and work in the real world, and most have children attending school in the district, unlike the majority of the board or administration. Our children and families are directly impacted by the decisions and policies you make. It's time you begin to view parents who attend the meetings and email you concerns as assets, not enemies. It's time the administration and board begin to build trust with parents instead of breed animosity. Over the past couple of years, I've witnessed appalling social media behavior by board members and their surrogates. The vile comments and attacks made by board member surrogates like Scott Riley and Marcy Sheen are unbelievable. The fact you allowed your surrogates to post repeatedly on a private group that included students says a lot about your character. Almost as bad are the board members who block parents from commenting publicly simply because they do not agree. Aren't board members supposed to be representatives of the community, not just the community members you agree with? Someone who only communicates with those he agrees with is not really interested in representing the community, but pushing a personal agenda. I have a few items I would like for you to reflect upon. I would like to have a discussion and hear your thoughts. Who are the students on the Wellness Committee? How are they chosen? Is it a diverse group across all demographics and levels of involvement? Or is it the Student Council, National Honor Society, and activists? If you're receiving input from the same students already involved in student government, how can you possibly believe they are representative of the entire student body? Please take the time to reflect on your process and determine if it could be improved. Please consider adding parents to the Wellness Committee. You have students, administrators, and board members. Why not parents? Intentionally excluding parents... Intentionally excluding parents while allowing self-proclaimed activist board members access to students in a district facilitated Wellness Committee is sending the message the administration is in cahoots with the activist members and is using the Wellness Committee to promote their agenda. If you continue to refuse parental involvement, I request you remove the two activist board members from the committee. Has the district opted out of this comprehensive sex ed requirement? If not, please explain why. Have you evaluated what lessons will need to be removed from the current wellness curriculum in order to meet the new learning standards? Please explain how the adoption or exemption of the standards will impact students. Will the district be adopting a new curriculum or will you be utilizing supplemental materials? I'm not an activist, a right-winger, or a member of the Proud Boys. I'm a parent with concerns which extend beyond my children and I would like to know the administration and board values input from parents and are willing to considering differing viewpoints when establishing policies. And as far as the Equity Committee and equity in learning, I'd like you to know that last year or the year before, we discovered that Palatine High School students received 100 hours of SAT prep while Palatine students received five. So, and this had to be repeatedly brought up to the board and the administration before they agreed.
You have one minute remaining.
And mind you, the contract guaranteed that the teachers, you know, the ones at Palatine that spent 10 hours compared to the ones at Frem who spent 100, received the same pay.
Speak to the board because it's hard to hear you when you're not at the microphone.
Well, I'm just addressing the fact that the teachers have the union to protect, that they get equitable pay, but the students don't have anyone. They're relying on you to provide them equal opportunities in learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who addressed the board. At this time, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to have pulled from the Consent Agenda? Okay, if there are none, may I have... The recommended action is that the Consent Agenda be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to Special Reports and Communication. First item is Freedom of Information Act requests. You have that information there. The next is the 2022-2023 Tentative Budget Transportation Fund, and it's an information item. Dr. Small?
The Business Office continues to prepare the 22-23 Annual Budget. The Transportation Fund is shared tonight as information and the O&amp;M Fund and Educational Fund will be presented with the Tentative Budget as a whole at the August meeting. At the August meeting, the board takes action for public inspection of the budget for 30 days prior to its adoption at the September meeting. The budget must be adopted by September 30th of each year.
Thank you. That takes us then to the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund update. Again, it's an information item. Dr. Small?
Throughout a series of three stimulus bills, the U.S. Congress has provided funding to the state and subsequently Illinois schools for emergency relief funding due to COVID-19. This report details the use of ESSR-1 and ESSR-2 and the beginning review of ESSR-3. The funding is available through the 2023-2024 school year.
Question. Are the ESSR funds, do they show up on any of the financial sheets or are they kind of like, they are?
Yes, they are shown as both revenue and expenditures. The revenue portion comes when the claim has been submitted. The expenditures show up as they are incurred.
So the federal funding row is where the ESSR money is?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it, don't we have to still apply for the money or like a grant?
We do, it's a reimbursement of expenditures submitted and reviewed and then once the approval has happened, then those funds are passed through to us.
So it only goes up there once we've got approval to use the funds, is that correct?
Once we've received the reimbursement of the funds.
And then it goes to that row?
Yep, correct.
Any other questions? All right, then that will take us to Safety Information. And again, it's an information item. Dr. Small?
District 211 continues to work with local police departments and safety consultants to review new safety, school safety practices and technologies. This assessment, which has continued over all years, continues over the summer. Though all safety plans are not detailed in the public, in order to not undermine the effectiveness of a safety measure, I'd like to list some key components of our safety school measures. Prevention is the most important component of safety and it starts with a shared responsibility from the entire community. Research in school safety illustrates the need for supportive learning environments in communities where all feel supported, valued, and connected. Our schools continue to work diligently to connect students with school, including staff, activities, and athletics. We continue to expand our social emotional learning along with the understanding the challenges that students bring to school with them. Our intervention teams, including administrators, counselors, psychologists, and social workers, act quickly to respond, intervene, and connect families with additional community supports. Social media continuously plays a role in security issues and it's vital that parents, students, and community members are in tune to unusual social media posts, seeing or hearing statements out of the ordinary, and reporting them to either the school or local law enforcement. These situations are extensively and thoroughly investigated in partnership with our local police department. School administration always informs and partners with local police whenever a threat or concern for safety arises or a student demonstrates concerning behavior. There are safety components within our school that continue to be in place and evaluated. Perimeter control, including exterior-interior door locking and door alarms, communication systems, P.A. systems, blue light pulse stations that rapidly send emergency messages in motion throughout our schools, armed resource officers present daily during school hours, threat assessment systems in partnership with each local police department, and clear and present danger reporting, local safety concerns through our iPads and websites, which now have the State Crisis Line and National Suicide Prevention Line added to IDs as an additional layer of communication, external school consultant assessments and safety meetings with local police two times per year and annually as a district. District 211 is an annual partner supporting and organizing the Illinois School Safety Conference. And some additional layers of safety that will be implemented in the fall include ID scanning, increased control of visitor entry, limited exterior entrance availability, and increased perimeter door security measures, camera upgrade systems, and continued implementation of students' sense of belonging and adult connections. We ask our students, staff, and parents to continue to be open-minded for new inconveniences that may occur as we add additional layers of safety. New safety technologies continue to be evaluated in partnership with our security consultants and local law enforcements as they are tested for sites of high schools of over 2,000 and up to almost 3,000 people entering our schools. There is additional information attached to the agenda as well as a link to the Secret Service report on averting targeted school violence.
Any questions of Dr. Small?
I just have one. I read through the safety information and it does encourage our community and our parents to direct our students back to utilize the school resources and specifically, it says that they ask parents to speak with their students about utilizing our support systems. What do we do on the backend to encourage students to engage their parents?
So in terms of connecting to support services for the family?
No, I mean, parents are typically our students' best advocate. Do we have any processes in place that encourage our students to also talk to their parents and family? Or do we isolate our students from our parents and families?
No, we don't isolate our students from their parents and families. So if we are already talking to a student, the family becomes a part of that conversation for whatever person they're working with, whether it's a counselor, a psychologist, or a social worker. Is that what you're asking in that component?
I'm just concerned because I know that, you know, listening here, we have our Wellness Committees, we have other group activities that go on in the school. I've been part of Operation Snowball, I know how that works. I'm just curious if we encourage our staff to facilitate communications between students and parents as well. And again, reading the safety information, it does talk about the district engaging the parent to push the student back to our resources. I just want to ensure that we're also encouraging our students to engage their parents and families at home.
Noted.
I would hope that we do that through some of the different parenting sessions, orientations, things of that nature. Okay, so there is literature that goes out to the parents. And I think that's a valid point because the parents need to be connected with the students and to know that they can contact us also.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, is the question, are we encouraging students to talk to their parents? Is that the question?
When there are safety issues, right. I mean, we hear about our, I mean, I know as a parent that I'll get texts if there's issues with safety at school and sometimes the parent is the first person they reach out to.
Yes.
And then what happens after that, right? And that's part of that whole community. So the communication just doesn't die when the student reaches out to the parent, that we have, in essence, a dialogue.
Sure. So I think it's, if you are asking specifically where it's covered currently, and as Dr. Small has shared, we're updating what we do, right? When we have new experiences and new research. When students identify a trusted adult, what's been done in the past is they've been asked to identify a trusted adult at school and outside of school. And that outside of school is typically the parent most of the time. Secondly, when schools, a lot of times we use the tagline, say something, see something, that see something, say something, a lot of times that say something is to someone in the home, i.e. the parent or the guardian. So yes, that is stated and we could certainly also make sure that there are other opportunities and other direct times that we encourage students to talk to their parents about safety items, about other, whatever items, right?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to say this. I'm very impressed with what District 211 has done over the past month, taking a pretty comprehensive and deep review of our security footprint right now and finding numerous ways that that can be improved. And especially, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Hildebrand for, I believe, running that effort. I know it was intense and I think you covered a lot of ground and in great deal of detail. I'm looking forward to the rollout.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. And that takes us to... There's no unfinished business. That'll take us to new business. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education renew its membership in the Illinois Association of School Boards for 2022-2023 and authorize the superintendent to pay the annual dues of $19,714. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to EdRed. The recommended action is that the Board of Education renew its membership in EdRed for the 2022-2023 school year at a fee of $5,350. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry.
So we've had previous, we've had discussions about this at the last, certainly the last meeting, but I think it was the last two. I'm not, I don't like, even though the increase is minimal in terms of actual, you know, relative percentage in dollars, I don't like it, but at the same time, I think it's better to have a seat at the table than to give up the seat, you know, the seat at the table in terms of what essentially would amount to be like a protest vote. So that's where I've come down on it.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other discussion, then may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us to the next item. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve construction of houses during the 2022-2023 and 2023-2024 school years on two district-owned lots. Further, that the following amounts be budgeted for these projects. Construction costs for the student-built home located in the Palatine in the amount of $279,000 for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, including consulting fees and contingency, and construction costs for the home located in Elgin in the amount of $580,000 to be spread over the 2022-2023 and 2023-2024 fiscal years, including consulting fees and contingency. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I noticed that we're working on a property in Elgin. I believe part of our contract was consideration of three homes within the development off of this 20 acres that we had. Are we in discussion with the developer to provide students?
We are. We, several people from our office have met with them to discuss at the time that we started with the planning for this lot, that was not a possibility for us, but we do still have those three lots that are allocated as part of the contract.
Will they, will that work schedule-wise with the schedule that's here for the properties? I know this goes out into 2024.
We are talking about a few different options on how we work on those lots in conjunction with other contractors and trades with those lots, but yes, we don't anticipate an issue with the timeline right now. There is no timeline that's tied to the construction of the homes on those three lots.
Thank you.
Are these lots at Summit that are being referred to here?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, then may I have a roll call, please? Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, so the next is the recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to enter into a license agreement with the NOW Arena at a cost of $170,000 for the off-site 2023 graduation ceremonies and $178,500 for the off-site 2024 graduation ceremonies for Palatine High School, William-Fremd High School, James B. Conan High School, Schaumburg High School, and Hoffman Estates High School. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question, I know that in the past, since we started using the NOW Arena, that there have been questions about opening up like the upper levels so we can get more capacity in there. We're going to be limited to what we have right now, which is basically the lower tier?
Both tiers are included in this contract.
Okay, that's new, correct?
Nope, it's always been like that.
Just out of curiosity, how much did we pay this past year?
$165.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us to some policies. This is the first reading. The first is the Proposed New Policy Awareness and Prevention of Child Sexual Abuse and Grooming Behaviors. It's up for the first reading. Any comments, thoughts, questions? Okay.
These policies, just all three of them presented today are because of legislative changes that we needed to update our policies that we were using.
Okay, thank you. All right, then it'll come back to us next month. The second policy is the Proposed New Policy Employee Conduct. Okay, if there's no questions. The next one is JHCB Food Allergy Management Program. Any questions in regards to that? Okay, then all those will come back to us at our next meeting.
Question on that one. I thought that was going to be more broad than food allergies.
It is. The title listed is the old title, because it has not been approved yet.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, then that takes us to... The next recommended action item is that the Board of Education authorize the district to upgrade the info-financial management software and convert to cloud hosting at a cost of $238,000 with annual software maintenance and hosting fees not to exceed $165,000 for each of the next five years. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Dr. Small?
The... Right up here details our need to make this change, and this is our, as it says, our financial software, where we run all of our financial accounts through. It is an important piece of our business.
And it's only being changed because it's being... The old system was outdated, the version that we currently have?
The version that we use that is in-house will be sunsetting, and we are migrating to the cloud in order to have the most updated versions as well as the updates.
Any other questions? All right, if there are none, then roll call, please. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to potential topics for future discussion. All right, no one has reached out. Then that takes us to our committee reports. NSEO did not meet in July, so I do not have a report. Our next meeting is going to be August 3rd. That takes us to EdRed and Mr. Rosenbloom.
Thank you. So EdRed had a webinar yesterday. They have a summer series on social-emotional learning, and yesterday's webinar was on restorative practices. And a new administrator in Student Services for Main Township High School, District 207, presented on how they have embraced and implemented restorative practices around social-emotional learning and discipline. So they talked about a lot of the data associated with discipline, and some of the things that we've talked about as a school district as well, and some of the questions around equity and the way students are treated, and who's disciplining them and responding to those issues and things like that.
Sorry, which district was that?
District 207, Main Township High School. And so how they've embraced restorative practices, which rather than say, "What did you do, and how are we going to punish you for that?" It's more around what happened, why did it happen, how can we prevent it from happening in the future, and more appropriate response to the students, less around disciplining them and punishing them, and more around identifying the cause and who their decisions or actions may have harmed as a result, and try to educate them around that. It's not around treating them with a feather, right, and showing them that it's okay to do what you did, nobody's going to get in trouble for that, but just a different way of responding. It was very educational, very informative. The next one they have is on August 3rd around social-emotional learning and equity. So I'm looking forward to attending that and learning some more information about that. So if anybody on the board or in the community would like to learn more about that, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'd be happy to talk to you more about some of that content.
Did they talk a little bit about Senate Bill 100 and dealing with kids fairly and how schools work with kids?
I think that's going to be at next month's around equity and how they treat people fairly between their differences.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Community and Family Services Report. I know Mr. Dombrowski or Mr. McGowan.
You missed one there, Administrative Board Policy Group.
Oh, I apologize. The Administrative Board Policy Group. Mr. Kramer?
Three policies now, and how many are we going to talk about on August 3rd?
Several more.
Several more.
Okay.
That's when our next policy meeting is, so. And I think we're meeting on... Could it be on Tuesday, the 2nd? Whatever it is, we'll find out. All right, thank you. All right, I apologize. Then that takes us to Community and Family Services Report. I don't know if there is one.
The last meeting I attended in Palatine was revolving around the D-15 planning, and I think there's another one this week.
I'm sorry, the D-15?
They're doing a referendum. I think they're splitting $98 million between internal funds and then bonds.
Okay, thank you. All right, then that takes us to Facilities and Building Safety Report. Mr. Bradley?
Yes, so I had the opportunity to attend several meetings with all the local police departments around new safety technology. Also, I'll be going out tomorrow with Ms. Hummel to Palatine High School, Fremd High School, and then we'll wrap up and end the day at Conant High School, and just have a look at some of the ongoing construction that we are doing out there.
Thank you. All right, then that takes us to our announcement, our upcoming events, and August 11th is our first day of classes for the 22-23 school year. All right. The next recommended action is that the Board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened or reasonably potentially danger... Potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, and public, the public or public property. Collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
The recommended action is that the Board return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the closed session minutes of December 9, 2021, January 20, 2022, February 17, 2022, March 17, 2022, April 7, 2022, April 28, 2022, May 12, 2022, and May 26, 2022, no longer require confidential treatment and are to be approved and placed on file. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is the recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Vera Bass effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Marla Caballero effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Linay Sinkus Finelli effective December 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Denise Gilbert effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Steve Lackney effective June 2026 consistent with the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Elizabeth Houchens-Lunsford effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. M. Denise Mitchell effective December 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. John Powers effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. John Schneider effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Paul Soto effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Mark Wallen effective May 2026 according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. And Jeanette Wernett effective June 2023 according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommendation is that effective August 1, 2022, at a gross salary of $116,150, Kendra Letzel be appointed as a full-time dean at Schaumburg High School until the Illinois State Board of Education posts her principalship endorsement, at which time she will be a 10-month assistant principal at Schaumburg High School. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
All right, and if there's no other business to come before the Board, then the Board President declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned, and it's 11:31.